Good evening, everybody, and welcome to our council meeting for July 11. You have the agenda before you. Is there any additions?
Madam Mayor, administration has no additions for the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Counsel, could I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to accept.
Counselor Anderson, all in favor? Carry. So this evening, we have a number of long service awards because due to COVID, we were unable to hand them out, so we're going to have the program this evening. So we have a lot of our staff here, and I'd like to welcome all the staff. And we're going to begin with 2022.
Yeah, 2020.
I missed 2020.
The ones that were due in 2020.
I'm missing 2020. I'm missing 2020. I'm still missing one. I need to see this.
Here, your swag is around the action.
Cannot, yeah.
This is some regime?
Oh, I would, I need the
Bigger one.
Radar, too.
Oh.
I have 2021. I must have not thought you of 2020. Okay, we're gonna go reverse. Well, Clark goes, sorry, guys. Not a very good vanna. If counsel wouldn't mind coming up here so that we can thank all of our long service awards people. We'll begin with 2022. And we'd like to begin with Mark McLean. Mark is our safety officer, and since assuming this role with the town's health and safety program, Mark has elevated the program to newer levels. And under his leadership, the health and safety program has become second nature to you guys, I guess. Whenever you see him coming, you know he's coming for something. And counsel, too, he's got us on his radar as well.
One time.
So we're really pleased because our core audit scores are really high, and they're in the high 90s, so thank you for that, Mark. And thank you for your dedication to the town and to High Level, and for your commitment to health and safety.
Thank you.
Mark, you're supposed to come this way.
Oh, okay, go this way.
Congratulations.
It's like the academies.
Thank you. Thank you.
Next, we'd like to welcome Lori. Lori has been with the Lori has been here 10 years, so that's quite an accomplishment. And we'd like to thank you for your dedication to the town and for the past decade of service to the town here and the entire department. You're truly an asset to our team, and we hope you stay long to get your 25. It's been a pleasure to watch you in your new role especially. So Lori is our newest CPO, and she's got her hands full. So thank you very much, Lori. Thanks.
Thanks. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thanks.
So we
Time to wake up.
Do you wanna? So from the 2021, we'd like to welcome Elf, Elphon Smith. Elf has had some health issues, and we're really glad to see him here. And Elf has been with us for 15 years. He started his career as an entry-level operator. And he has a great determination, a huge work ethic, and he has become very reliable and very valuable to our town. And our town kind of fell apart when he got sick, so so we have to keep demonstrating, but we truly appreciate it, Elf. So thank you so much for your service. Leroy is our next one, and Leroy has been with us for five years. And he works in the recreation field, and he's worked there since 2007. He's worked in Calgary, in Provost, and now we're happy to see him in High Level. He's originally from Port St. John, right? And he enjoys watching the Vancouver Canucks and the Toronto Blue Jays that have been winning much lately, and the Detroit Lions. So we look forward to many years with Leroy because he's a new holding
Thank you very much.
Romar Talantos, he's our, I hope I said that right. He's our finance coordinator. He's been with us for five years. And with him in our Spiderman chair, we've seen he's very knowledgeable and very forward-thinking. And we're glad you settled into this coordinator role, and you also have an awesome work ethic. I think he's the only one that is here more on Sundays than me.
Except I'm always late.
Thank you so much, and thank you for your service. Thank you.
Thanks, Roma. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
His wife, Tammy. Tammy is with FCSS, and she has also been here for five years. And she works very hard in her role as the FCSS leadership role. And she's made a huge asset to our community. Whenever the manager is away, she also takes over that position. And she has grown into her position with a lot of confidence and compassion, especially for vulnerable people in our community, our children. And we're very thankful for your calm demeanor with them. And we wish you all the best with your new baby. Okay, so on to 2020, beginning with Darcy, who has been here for 20 years, but as long as me. Public Works Forum. Darcy, your dedication to the town of High Level has been an inspiration to everyone. You have a very selfless nature and commitment to helping others. And you always go above and beyond the call of duty, and we're lucky to have you. So thank you.
Congratulations first.
And Dave, what can I say about Dave? Dave is in charge of everything, all the buildings and all the maintenance. And he accepted that challenge with our aging facilities. And while he worked in many departments, he works with all of you. And through the years, your talents and efforts have helped us maintain this building. Just get the doors fixed so I can dig in. Congratulations, Dave, on your anniversary. We really appreciate everything you do for us. And that concludes the awards for tonight. So just really appreciate all of you. You are the most amazing team to work with. And I know it's been a very trying summer with health issues and people gone, but we've all stepped up to the plate. And I was just driving down Main Street today after being gone for two days. It just looks amazing, so thank you very much. So the RCMP apparently aren't here, so we will go forward. If there's any questions about it, I guess we can ask them next time. I think they're pretty busy. I saw them tonight, so we'll move on to the minutes. Everybody's had a chance to read the minutes. There was just one error, and that was under the, and it wasn't really an error. It was under page 26, I think, Sandra. It said the sign donated by the town of High Level. It was under the question period. That sign was donated by the Chamber of Commerce. Is there any other errors? If not, could I have someone move the minutes? Counselor Lambert, thank you. All in favor? Carry. So under my report, I apologize, I was held up by WestJet, but couldn't do my report. But I did attend the council meeting on June 27th, Boreal Housing on June 30th, Canada Day, which was fantastic. So Ruth, thank your department and everybody else of the town that worked so hard to make that event such a great one. It was so nice to see everybody working together again. And not that we didn't during COVID, but it was just nice to see everybody there. So thank you for such a wonderful day. July 2nd, I attended Counsel Lambert's wedding. Congratulations to our newest married man. On July 5th, we met with the RCMP district management, the chief superintendent Sean Curry, superintendent Blake Ward, and staff sergeant, whom is the Danko, yes. Jesse Onassis. And we discussed a lot of things. And one of the major takeaways from the meeting was a discussion about the RCMP facilitating between us and the First Nations to come up with solutions, our own solutions, seems Alberta Health Services won't help us, on what to do with mental health issues and addictions in our communities and surrounding areas. So in August, Superintendent Blake Ward will be contacting us and the two chiefs that want to work together to begin with. And we're gonna get in contact with Paddle Prairie, as well as Rainbow Lake and McKenzie County, to see if we can come up with a Northwest regional solution. We also named the new staff sergeant, but I don't know if I'm allowed to say that, if it's public yet.
They have not made any announcements.
Okay, then I won't tell you. Stay tuned. And finally, on July 9th, I will speak to this in camera because once again, it's something that's not public yet. But I spent some time working on a presentation for Northwest SAR. So that's my report. Any questions? Could I have someone move my report, please? Counselor Jessamyn, all in favor? Carry. Deputy Mayor, committee reports from counselors.
Also attended the Canada Day celebrations on July 1st. And yes, kudos to the town staff and great, great presentation. 2,500 hot dogs were consumed by all, so it was a good time.
And how many cakes?
10.
10 cakes.
10 slab cakes.
Yes.
For people that don't know what was there. And that's it.
Thank you. Counselor Anderson?
On July 6th, I attended the Golden Ranch Society meeting, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Counselor Dwyer, July 1st, I also attended the Canada Day festivities. And that is essentially it. Counselor Jessamyn?
July 1st event, I had a really good time. And from all the council and people that I talked to, they really, really appreciated. A lot of great feedback and huge success from everything that I heard about. So thanks to all the staff and all their hard work. It made it go really, really well. On the 5th, I attended the presentation by the RCMP, and that is it for me.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I missed the July 1st event. I was sitting up on my own. But I heard nothing but good reviews. Everyone had a great time. I heard it was a really good turnout. And I don't want to talk today. They really enjoyed themselves. So again, kudos to you, Ruth, and everyone else on the team. Other than, I also attended the July 1st meeting with the RCMP, as Mayor touched on, a few things to discuss on working with the other partners in the area. So I don't have nothing else for board.
Thank you. Counselor Welkey?
July 5th, I also attended the meeting with the RCMP, a few other council, and that's all I have to report.
Thank you. And you attended a wedding of your own?
I did.
Not your own, little, your daughter. All right. Thank you, everybody. Could I have someone move council reports? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. The action list, is there any discussion? If you want. Yes. Go ahead.
I'm sorry, I just lost it here. Yeah, updates on the RSSA, is that on the action list? Sorry.
Yep.
Yes.
Did you get my signature?
You and I both signed it.
Oh, okay.
And I let Byron know that all the documents have been updated. So he told me he talked to Reeve Knelson, and they were gonna sign it. I just hadn't, to be honest, I'm not sure where to track down that signed document, but I will figure that out.
It's in cyberspace somewhere. Yes.
Madam Mayor, could I get an update on our new or about-to-be-new sanitation dump and how that's going?
Sure. Thank you, Counselor Anderson.
Can I just first completely finish Counsel Welkey's? We did assign, we did sign the agreements, but we did it by the DocuSign. So it did, we're just, like he said, we're waiting.
So it's
There was no big splashy affair. It was just, let's get this
So it is all signed, both sides, very efficient?
Well, I have not seen their signatures on it yet. I was informed they would be signed, so
So maybe we could just give them a follow-up call?
Yeah, I'll come back tomorrow.
Okay, thank you. Sorry. Go ahead, Director Strobe.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. So our signing up is well underway. We've completed all the earthworks, all the water and sewer portion that was completed this week. They're now getting prepped to do side gravel work for the roadway that'll be in there and the base for the building. So hopefully, a week or 10 days from now, they'll be starting the slab for the building. The actual structure for the saltwater station portion is built in the city. So I'm hoping that in the next three weeks, we should see that project full complete. It's coming along really good. A little late getting going this year. Again, some companies are having issues with staffing also, so it's well underway and looking really good.
Thank you. Anybody else have questions about the project? Counselor Lambert?
Sorry about that project initial.
No.
Can I have a different one?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I was just going to ask, sorry about America, yes, towards a word for Director Strobe. Well, with the surveying company in town, have you got any updates from what they've been finding so far on the streets?
Thank you, Counselor Lambert. So I'm assuming that we're talking about the wastewater inspection
Yes, that one, yeah.
In construction, yes. So our contract has been out for almost a week now. It's looking reasonable, to say the least. I haven't seen all the pictures. We do have a serious problem in this community about grease buildup. We noticed that, but a lot of it came in on the camera work. We're gonna have to address that to the public and see if we can refrain on putting grease down the sewer. We have a lot of buildup of grease within our sewer systems, and that's not a good thing. So other than that, the conditions are probably 50/50. We've seen nothing major reactively, but one natural let building will fix out ourselves. But they'll be here for another 15 days, and we should have a better report yet. But currently, our biggest issue right now, we've seen there's grease buildup on these sites and pipes, which isn't good.
So with the grease buildup, is it possible to run a smart pick down those lines, or what's the solution?
So it is able to be cleaned. We've investigated. And so our old hydra back, which is our sewer flushing truck, currently is down somewhere there. It's the pump's been a little, it should be back online in three weeks. We coordinated that work around having the camera people in town, so we didn't have a unit down. We're able to deal with emergent situations. We do have a cleaning head fork on order, which will strip the grease from the inside of the pipe. And we're also working with a new foaming system, which is supposed to help take the film off also. So we do have a plan after all this, starting this, and that'll be dependent on manpower and projects this year of how much time we can get into it. But at least a little of the real problems is after this camera work.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions? Could I have someone move the project? Oh, sorry.
One more, sorry, Madam Mayor. Just an update also on the pot hole filler, is that? Have you got that out yet?
Yes. So thank you, Counselor Lambert. The patching, we've had two of our three available staff. First is, we've been fairly short. We've had some air illnesses and injuries. So they've been out all week, last week. And in between rain, we've been going pretty heavy on our spray patching. We're back to a normal, getting closer to normal status now. So we'll be following it up with crack sealer. We're gonna hit all the newer streets, as well as the older streets, or the trails first, while the spray patching's happening on the main older roads. And I'm over a single back and insurance accident. So it's been going well. We've been doing a lot, slowly getting there. It's been a challenge for us, but it has been very busy.
Counselor Welkey?
On that note, is it that really light gray color material that is the patching material?
Thank you, Counselor Welkey. So a quick explanation of what happens is here's a rundown on how it works. The pothole itself is blown out and get most of the moisture, at least debris out. Then a tack oil, light oil, is sprayed within the hole to seal it and get it coated. Then a heavy ash hole mix of oil and rock goes in. And the gray color material you see on top is just plain stone to cover the patch. That stone is there just to keep the patch from pounding out until it's set. Then we come along with the sweep, where it sweeps that light stone off.
Yeah, it looks like they don't gravel in there.
Well, just visually, then, like, you, like, the, you know, the public can kind of see, too, like, where the repairs have been done?
Yes, and the stone isn't the final result. It's just a cover to protect the patch until it sets. And keeps it from sticking to your tires and bicycles and everything else.
Yeah, we drove over him, Hayden, said you guys did a pretty good job. He's in there, not just barking.
That's awesome. Higher.
Any other questions? Okay, could I have someone?
Questioner mover.
Over. Counselor Dwyer, all in favor? Carry. So the upcoming event schedule, does anybody have questions about that? Romeo this weekend. What's that? Oh. So, okay, no questions. Could I have someone move it, please? Counselor Lambert, all in favor? Carry. So under the disaster recovery program.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will address that presentation, update.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So as per the briefing note that was provided, it has been confirmed, and we have a letter from the government, that our forthcoming payment will cover all projects that we have outstanding, not including the ineligible costs that we have on our projects. So we are going to be fully done, our projects for the DRP. And the province did meet their deadline. We have not yet got the deposit in the account, but the payment was not applied until July. The letter was not applied until July 5th, so I see it coming by the end of the week. We did have a conversation with the director of AMA, and she assures us that we will be sitting down at a further date to discuss all the ineligible costs of $190,000 of the projects that we had put forth with DRP. So I feel like a lot of the conversations have moved into positive. Thank you to council for pushing the conversations. And it's just been an unfortunate event that we have taken on a lot of these costs. And I think that it's very aware to the minister and to the province what our stance is on it. And also, we have provided all of our opportunity cost analysis from CIBC from 2019 until 2021. They are reviewing it. They actually, the director is on holidays until next week. So we will be sitting down to review what they can do on their end and what they can help us with with the opportunity cost. There was no promises made, of course, but at least they got the paperwork. And they are the one that brought it to us from the minister's office. So they wanted us to clarify that this was not funds that was outstanding within the current claim, but it was a separate, a separate claim and a separate amount of funds based on what we have carried over from 2019 until now, until we get the deposit in 2022, so.
So the two projects that are outstanding, they are willing to negotiate?
Yeah, the ineligible costs. So it was explained to the director that a lot of the ineligible costs, they would have been taken care of, and they would have been pushed through with OFC if they were in place at the time, with the, I guess, education With the, I guess, education on the paperwork, the administration side of the disaster that the town had to incur, we just wouldn't have had all of the guidelines and all, and all of that met with the information we got, especially from the mutual aid project with all of the other counties. Normally, those municipalities would have invoiced OFC directly. And we, they invoice us directly and without getting any of those costs or any of that claim back. We had to pay the claims out to prove that we paid it. So they are willing to sit down, look at all the ineligible costs of a hundred and ninety thousand, plus look at the paperwork and all of our analysis from CIBC to look at our opportunity cost as a separate item.
So are we going to sit down face to face? Are you going to sit down face to face?
They, they are supposed to contact us. And just for further, Director Phillips, report. Have Mr. Blonner's contacted me today and said he met with Minister McIver last night. I think they're all stampeding right now. And he said, Mr. McIver, Minister McIver is very interested to see what our presentation on the opportunity costs and the outstanding ineligible. And he's glad that they have gave the 2.4 million to date. And if the conversation is not expedited with in a reasonable period of time, he would like to know about that.
Very good. Yes.
So the opportunity costs that are calculated here go to the end of 2021. Halfway through 2022, so can we update those numbers and provide them with that as well?
We definitely could provide them with numbers right up until we get the deposit date and include that. I know the conversation with the director was up until, this is all they were provided, is the cost up until the year end. But with our financials ending and the deposit coming, we can definitely update that with our conversation. And they do want to have, maybe not an in-person meet, but a Zoom meeting and go through everything. She, she was very positive in saying that they've received the communication from the minister's office, and she wants to rectify a lot of it, so.
Thank you for your hard work.
Good work to you guys. Thanks.
You don't need to.
Just for information.
Could I have a motion? Counsel Welkey, all in favor? Carry. So the next item is our strategic plan.
Madam Mayor, Director Gavin will present that to Counsel.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Counsel. Um, yes, sorry?
MPD?
No, rising.
How are you feeling today?
My legs are pretty sore. It was a long slog, but I made it a couple of hours before the cutoff, so it was good.
Good for you.
Yeah. So we have our final strategic plan. At the last meeting, we took a few minutes and went over the written content and flagged any spelling mistakes or issues that the members of council had with the draft. So tonight, I brought back the amended version as requested, and I'm asking for it to be adopted as presented. And then later this year, administration will work either amongst ourselves or with the consultants. So we'll have to, you know, come back with a budget item at that time on the implementation plan. So these would be the action, the specific actions that we worked on during our strategic planning sessions to implement the strategic goals and objectives that we developed with community consultation.
Counsel? Are you, do you have any questions about the updates?
No questions about the update, but I do have a question about going forward. So the evaluation of how we stay on track, that will be a part of the update as we go forward, bullet? Or how will we do that?
Yeah, the, the implementation plan is currently an Excel spreadsheet. It's about four or five sheets long. And all of the action items that we wrote up on the boards in our sessions are currently in there. But it's put together with the RISI model. So us as administration will be working with the consultants to assign departments and accountability to different staff members. And then we'll be reporting back to council either quarterly. I would imagine quarterly is probably the best on progress on implementation. And then if we need to adjust, if certain approaches or goals are just not working or not attainable, that's when we would have the discussion.
So, well, can we have a copy of that? Is there any way that it can be taken off of Excel so that we also could see it at council meetings?
Yeah, so right now, it's just in a draft format. So we just have it all black text is everything we'd worked on as a group. And then the consultants have put in a number of suggestions in a different color font. So once we've, I guess, worked together and agreed upon the actions, then moving forwards, that will be available to council, absolutely.
Any other questions from council? All right then, can I have a motion? Deputy Mayor? Move to accept or?
Recommendation.
Okay, let council adopt the strategic plan. All in favor? Carry. Thank you.
Thank you.
For your hard work and for CMR's work. So the community peace officer, oh, sorry, sorry, sorry. The remediation of the town-owned property.
Madam Mayor, we just wanted to bring this forward just for council information, also feedback if council's aware something administration may not be. We've been looking as we're preparing for the Rainbow Boulevard project. He's had some engineers out there who've looked at the cross section. Some of the work that needs to be done, some of the stuff that can be retained. But one of the things that's been noted is that the businesses on the subside of Rainbow Boulevard are utilizing the boulevard for commercial purposes. However, those boulevards have not been brought, they're in a very untidy state along there. And that would be both the North Star and the Cat Rentals properties are the two main properties involved there. Other properties along the service roads and high level have been allowed to use the town property adjacent to the roadway if they've hard surfaced that area. GM has done that, Ford has done that, SO has done that. There's a number of places that have done that. So what we want to put forward to the landowners is the ability that will help coordinate the hard surfacing of that boulevard or the remediation of the boulevard back to a landscape as part of the project. Although it will be at the only, it'll be at the cost of the landowner if it's anything above just topsoil and grass.
So if they decide to hard surface it, pave it, or whatever?
We'll coordinate that with the project, so it'll be a little lower cost. And if there's any feedback on that, we'll bring it back to council if they want to look at other options. Because this is town property, we can look at doing it under local improvement.
So does that go, like I drove down there, I forgot to look, but does that also go down to TM?
There's one, there's one small chunk between Cat Rentals and GM that doesn't hurt service, but I don't think GM's using that. It's just the boulevard isn't finished. But that's the same property owner that owns the North Star Plaza. So we could, we could offer to extend it that far, and that would clean up that entire boulevard in that area.
Any questions?
One question?
Yes.
So if property owners aren't interested in any improvements, how does that work?
So we would put it back to topsoil, see for the grass, and then it would be their responsibility.
It would be their, then it'd still be their responsibility to.
The maintenance was going to be their responsibility regardless of what we did.
Any other questions? Could I have a motion then, please? Counsel Dwyer? Your motion to?
I'll make the motion to.
Acceptance information.
Acceptance of the question. Thanks.
All in favor? Carry. So the RFD for the community peace officer program.
Madam Mayor, Director Gavin will address the next question.
Hello again, Mayor and Counsel. We had an audit completed by the Solicitor General back in May. They came up on site just for the day. They had two investigators came up and took a look at our policies, administrative directives. They did an interview with myself, the former Sergeant CPO one, and then CPO two officer as well. And then did like a random selection of a number of reports from 2019 to 2022. They, the last time they done an audit was in 2017. There were just a couple of issues during that previous audit that had carried over into the current one. And we're now sitting at four issues that we need to resolve, which we pretty much have done. Most of it was just report review, a couple of changes to the administrative directives, policy change, which is the next item on the agenda. And just, I guess, a recommitment to their concerns around, around the scope creep issue that had started to occur. So we were, we're currently not in compliance. However, we have until the end of the month to comply, and we're pretty much there. So if the, the policy on the next item is amended tonight, I can submit that to them. And that's just the last outstanding item for, for, for this Solicitor General, for us to come into compliance. So it wasn't too bad. It was a long day, but overall, I think it was turned out pretty well. So if there's any questions, I'll do my best to answer those.
Yes.
I have two questions, Madam Mayor. I'm reading it, and I read it over a few times. The, was there a complaint? Is that, was I reading that wrong? Was there a complaint filed against the town?
Yes. Yes, they, they did receive a complaint last year. And the three points are within the RFD there. So there was just a concern about lack of review of the peace officer files. And then if there were complaints received by the town about the peace officers, a lack of investigation allegation was made. And then adherence to their authorities as well, so the scope creep issue that had been brought up. So that was a complaint that was made last year to the Solicitor General directly. And they did start an investigation into that, which really did prompt the audit as well, because they do one every five years at minimum. So when they did come up, I did have an extensive conversation with them about it. And their findings essentially were that as there'd been some structural changes, the services had moved to a different department, different manager, different level. I guess, being at CPO level two instead of one. They felt that the investigation didn't warrant any, them looking into it any further. So they've eventually wrapped their investigation.
So who investigates that Haley? The Solicitor General's office or us?
Well, the law enforcement branch did investigate it because it was a complaint sent straight to them. We can investigate the complaint, but as their finding is, they're satisfied with the current state of the program, that they're not willing to pursue it anymore. So I guess as the town chose to pursue it, there probably wouldn't be much benefit for us in doing so.
Okay, thank you for that. And then the second question, it has nothing to do with the, the investigation itself in the report, but just the going through the actual policy. I, I've noticed that with the uniform part of the policy, the proper use and where, it looks like it's been reviewed and has been revised to a more general, or gender neutral statements are in there. I'm just curious about some of the statements about proper use. I know being on our uniform committee with the government of Alberta, we're revamping the whole thing for that. And I'm just curious if that was any further in looking at the policy for the both male and female parts, if there would be any further changes to that as far as statements of proper use and where they went that far?
Not to the discussion that I had with them. They felt that the way it is was good enough. That wasn't a conversation that I had had with them at all.
Yeah, I wasn't going, like, because I've noticed that he, or there was edits made to the actual policy here. Like, say, under the female portion, may wear, or you changed that. So you've already, you've reviewed it and edited. So did you go any further to look at other terminology in there and use of words in there as far as proper use?
Yeah, sorry, no, I just went through and I don't know. I guess I felt like some of those weren't necessary in the places where they were. But yes, I see your point. I did try and neutralize it a bit. I mean, if that's an issue, we can change it back, but.
Oh, no, no, it's not an issue with me. I just know, we, we as a government, I am on the committee. We're being reviewing it. We've been challenged by employees from the statements that are in there, so I was just curious.
So you're meaning gender neutral pronouns?
Yeah, and, and the direction given to proper use. At one time, our policy stated you weren't allowed to have tattoos below your elbow. We had to take that out. It talked about proper hair use, cut, how it had to be cut. That had to be taken out. So there is some forms in here that discuss those. But I was just curious if we had, when, how depth or depth or in-depth you went into the review, that's all.
The military's.
So I did change the, the pronoun things to neutralize that a bit. But in terms of the haircut and the colors and the tattoos, I didn't do an in-depth review into that, not at all.
I'll leave it at that. I was just curious, that's all. Thank you.
So I have a question, Haley. I have a concern, actually, that I read in this audit that we had five hundred and thirteen, five hundred and fourteen files outstanding. What does that mean and why are they outstanding?
So it means that the way that the structure is set up, we had a Sergeant CPO officer who would have to review a hundred percent of the other CPO officer's reports. And then the supervisor to the Sergeant CPO had to review at least thirty percent of the Sergeant CPO files. And there was just a backlog on getting around to the review of those reports. And so that was left outstanding even after the Sergeant CPO was no longer a full-time employee. So that was an item that was flagged as outstanding. So that has been rectified since this audit was done. So I did go through them and ensure that those were reviewed and filed properly.
So what do you have to do to review them?
You just log into, we have an enforcement site that's a secure login. And as set up as a supervisor on there, I just sign in. And then the reports that are sent to the supervisor for review will be available for me. And I essentially click into the file, read what it was about, read the narrative, make sure that there's five or six different key pieces of information that have to be filled out for each report. I make sure that all that is done, the narrative matches the type of call or concern or issue, and then essentially tick it off that it was complete, and then that's done. Then you move on to the next one.
So these are all in compliance now?
Yes.
Any other questions? Okay. Can I have a motion, please? No? To accept or deny?
Accept a motion.
Counsel Welkey?
Alternative number one.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Carry. The next one is the RFD for the CPO program policy updates. Um, the next one is the RFD for the CPO program policy updates.
Yeah, sorry, Madam Mayor, this is just again to comply with the audit, just a few. Uh, we've discussed some of them already. Um, so this is just the only last outstanding item for the compliance with the audit.
Okay, Deputy Mayor makes the motion to?
Amendment is presented.
Okay, amendment is presented, all in favor? Carried. And finally, the draft consolidated financial statements.
Madam Mayor, Director Phillips will speak to that.
Mayor and Council, um, we were anticipating to have our draft consolidated financial statements from the auditors for today's meeting. Um, unfortunately, um, they will not be ready until possibly the end of the week. Um, so what we're, what administration is proposing is to table it for the August third meeting. Um, they are spending more time on the TCA section. Um, and they are, they just don't wanna present a draft statement with not solid information and understanding of it. So if we can table that to the August.
Who's they?
Um, our auditors.
I hate pronouns.
Um, they, our auditors.
I'd like to know the.
Yeah, they, they just don't, they don't want to um, send a draft consolidated statement without it being something they, something metrics is down behind and also that they could um, present in a, in a full presentation. And so we were looking at tabling it for August meeting and then also planning to have this done with the supper and the presentation for metrics as well at the same time.
Okay. Thank you. Do you want a motion for them to table?
Yes.
Somebody wanted to make that motion, Counsel Dwyer, all in favor? Carried. So um, question period. Do you have any questions?
Oh yeah, there's only one. Well, kind of, yeah, I've got some that came up just the other day. It's kind of weird. It kind of takes me back. I asked about last meeting. I asked about, you know, all these charges that were dropped, you know, by the RCMP. And I thought that we got the revenue from it, but we didn't. So, but the thing is, I went to the BMO yesterday, or the weekend, and BMO is now closed to the, uh, attention for our safety duty, safety concerns for their customers and employees. I mean, did that, did the, you know, dropping all these charges, did this lead to more bankruptcy? You know what I mean? Like, I mean, this is pretty shocking to see in a small town that I can't use an ATM that I bank at on the weekends or in the evenings now. And I had a guy come in and with a motorhome just as I was leaving and I had to stop him, tell him to go to AT, or CIBC because he didn't know where else to go. So, you know, it's gonna, not just affect us, how the residents of this town, but it's gonna affect, you know, the tourism. And people come to this town and they see a sign like that in the window, what does that make them think of our town?
So Wayne, I, I, good question. I, I just had a phone call from, from them to tell me that they were closing the doors and locking them as of five o'clock every evening. And I have not had a chance to discuss this with the RCMP. But I'm on the understanding that, um, and this, I, I, I'm not even gonna say it, but I'm gonna have a discussion with the RCMP um, about it. And this came from their head office. They tried to keep, keep the doors open, but their head office said they had to close because, because of the safety issues. And they had gone through the security footage because the people in our branch said, no, that's not a problem here. But they went through the security footage and found it to be a problem, so yes.
Well, it's funny because after all these years of being here, stepping over trunks to get to the bank, to the machine in the middle of the winter. I mean, we just, so what, right? But I mean, now they actually think, when you see a sign there, you know, as you're getting older and you start seeing signs, they're concerned about the resident's safety. I mean, should we be moving?
Well, and I asked that very same question, you know, like I just said, can't post a sign that says, we're closed? We're closing the bank from five, because I mean, the post office does the same thing. We're closing at five and it's not gonna be open weekends. I did not know that they were posting we're closed because of safety issues.
Yeah, the increased number of, and it says for the increased number of vacancies. So that, I mean, you know, you look at the guy that's coming in off the motorhome. You know, it's just, anyway, I just thought I brought it up because it's just another issue in town. It doesn't seem like anybody else in town knows it though, so, you know. Why do I have to notice these things? I don't know. And I'm, hey, I'm really glad when they're assigned back up over there. Over the fourth of May. I even went over and took pictures of them.
Yes. Somebody was listening to us.
Yeah, oh, it was good timing, I guess.
Yeah, thanks for bringing that up. And I, we'll hopefully have an answer for you next council meeting and hopefully we can just at least just post signs saying they're closed.
Well, they won't sell cheap. They put a lock on the door, like ATV and that, they wouldn't have that problem.
Yeah, well, I think that may be something they're working towards, but that's, so.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. So this ends our public portion and council will be going into in-camera. If there's um, any questions that you would like to forward to council, please feel free. And could I get a motion to move in camera, please?
Only motion move.
Counsel Anderson, all in favor? Carried.